Provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 28, 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, posted on the district website, sent to Tap into Nutley, advertised in the Nutley Sun on February 6, 2020. This is an official meeting. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Kukuzza, the roll call, please.
Mr. Carnesala?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. DeMayer?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Arrow?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kukuzza. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first virtual meeting. For tonight's hearing of the citizens, we'd like anyone that wishes to ask a question or be heard to submit that into the chat box. If you're in the meeting up in the upper right-hand corner, there's a little text box. You would click on that. It would open and you can type your question there. Please be sure to add your name and address. And when that section comes, we'll read off the questions and answer them for you. And if everyone can remember to put their microphones or their phones on mute, it would be very helpful. Thank you. I'd also like at this time to make a comment. The Board would like to express their sincere gratitude to Dr. Glazer, our district administrators, teachers, staff for acting decisively and being proactive in the face of current pandemic. We cannot imagine the tremendous effort put forth from the administrators, teachers, and staff behind the scenes to convert the current curriculum to prepare for virtual learning. We'd like to thank the parents and students for their understanding and patience as we begin to navigate virtual learning for the first time. We'd like to thank the commissioners for their leadership toward the safety of our community. And we are grateful for the partnership of Pomtonian and the Family Service Bureau and the volunteers from the community in making sure our students' food needs are met. No one knows what the future will hold, but by working together, we'll get through this trying time. Any other board members wish to make a comment at this time?
I would, I would, I would just say I would like to, yeah, let's everyone, you could go first, Charlie. Go ahead, take it away.
No, I was just going to thank Lisa for the nice words. And I've been interacting with Dr. Glazer, as you all know, quite often. And I want to thank her and the staff for the job that they've done to get us to this point and will continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski.
I would just like to add to that. It's amazing how everyone in this community is coming together. I mean, just everyone, from Nutley Family Service Bureau to the small businesses, but the restaurants, the commissioners, the Board of Education, the teachers. You know, I just, in the sign of the times, we are all collectively doing a great job. And I know I couldn't be more proud of all the work that we've done and everyone else coming together in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Carnesala.
I wanted to say something similar. From a parent's point of view, this has been very easy and seamless for me to do this with my son. And I want to thank everybody for all the hours they put in. I know it wasn't easy, but it definitely has paid off.
Thank you, Ms. Arrow. Okay, if that's all, can I have approval of the minutes, please?
I make the motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence?
Aye.
None.
Nope, okay. All right, tonight we'll have several presentations. I'd like to, the first presentation tonight will be for the preliminary budget. I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Glazer and Mr. Appleton to review the budget. Thank you. Dr. Glazer, are you on?
I'm on. Thank you, Lisa. Is Mr. Appleton on, or should I just go? Do we know?
Sure.
All right, I'm just going to talk then. Hi, everybody. Thank you. I'll circle back during my report and respond to your lovely words and talk about the staff. For tonight, my job is to talk about the preliminary budget. And I'm going to share mostly our process, how we put that together. You'll see a resolution on the agenda tonight to approve the preliminary budget. Just a reminder that this is a preliminary budget that needs to go to the county and state by March 20. We will have the following eight weeks, the Ad hoc Budget Committee and the other committees of the Board to continue to discuss the budget and before we submit the final budget to the state in May. Are there any questions about that before I go on to the budget process?
Dr. Glazer?
Yes?
This is Sal Ferraro.
Hi.
I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify that the preliminary budget can be adjusted upward or downward prior to the final May date.
That is correct. What you are resolving tonight is a balanced budget that is inclusive of the 2% and the additional 193,000, give or take, that we received in additional state aid. It is able to be adjusted from there for the May, for the final submission. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. All right. So I'm going to just begin. If Mr. Appleton joins the call at any time, you can feel free to jump in. I want to talk, first of all, about the budget process. The budget itself is the financial expression of the district's educational goals. We start with the strategic plan that we are in our second year of. We look at the board's goals and the district goals. And again, the budget is the financial expression of those goals. We actually are translating the educational vision and the needs of the community into dollars, which is not an easy task these days. As far as the budget flow process goes, just to reconfirm what Mr. Ferraro just asked, we start with a budget calendar. We work through the teachers, principals, supervisors, everybody coming together to develop a budget. This tentative budget that we're doing tonight ensures that the budget is there to support the student achievement and standards. This budget will be certified by Mrs. Kukuzza and sent to the Executive County Superintendent for review. Then, as I said, we come back over the next eight weeks. We work with the boards, we work with the community. We continue to work with our leadership team, our teachers, to be able to refine that budget. And then in May, we'll come to a final budget adoption, considering all of that input and adopting a budget that will be advertised. It will have to be approved by a majority of the full board when we come together in May, hopefully in person or virtually. Your role, the board's role in this process, you're pretty far down the road. You've already set our priorities through your board goals and your support of the district goals and the strategic plan. You've told us what priorities that you believe must be funded. We talk about the district goals for student achievement and needs. That's with the full input of Mr. Vania, Mrs. Locan Solo, and working with the coordinators and principals. And then we also look at what the community can afford. That's what your finance and facilities, your long-range facilities committees spend a tremendous amount of time looking at. Then, as we work through our budget calendar, we have our deadlines. This year's been a challenge, as you know, with Mrs. Yaman's retiring, Mr. Memora moving to a new district. We are grateful for Mr. Appleton stabilizing this process and making sure that we could come to this preliminary budget on schedule this evening. Again, this is the first step in communicating to the community. We'll have two additional board meetings where we talk about the budget, where we talk about the different pieces, the different pieces of the budget process and what we are continuing with our priorities. And then finally, the board's going to have oversight on that final budget to support the student achievement and standards. For us, we've completed most of those processes. We have set the priorities. We've developed the calendar. We've developed the preliminary budget. Again, we're starting to communicate to the community and ensuring what it is that we are presenting.
Dr. Glazer? Excuse me. Just, and I don't mean, I don't know how, I don't know how to interrupt, but one of our board members-
That's fine, let's do it.
One of our board members has lost contact with us, so we're trying to figure why he was dropped.
Can he come back into the meeting? Sign back into the link?
Well, it was, it was, Sal Ferraro, we're trying to figure how to get him back in, but Ian should know that he dropped out somehow.
Okay. So I think that he could either recome back into the link or call back in to the other link, so at least he'll hear the audio.
Yeah.
Yeah, he just joined.
Sal, are you back in?
Mr. Ferraro, have you rejoined the meeting? Mr. Ferraro, unmute your microphone and tell us if you're there.
I can see his number.
Yeah, he texted me and said I'm back.
He does not know how to unmute. Look for the red microphone with a line through it and push that so you can tell us you can hear us.
Doc, he's only on his phone. He won't see that. He's got to do the star six thing that Ian talked about.
Oh.
But at least he can hear us.
It should be star you, star six.
It's Erica. He just texted me and said he's back in.
Okay.
Okay. So as long as he can hear. I don't know what you missed, Sal, but so far I've talked about the timeline and process and reconfirmed your question that this preliminary budget is available for community input, board input, everybody's input, until the final budget is approved in May. I rewent through the budget flow process of how that works, the board's role in setting the budget and priorities, the fact that we are following the budget calendar, and my gratitude to Mr. Appleton for keeping us on that budget calendar. I wanted to now remind everybody about our budget and what these numbers represent. We'll make sure that a PowerPoint presentation or something similar is shared with the community so they have an opportunity to ask those questions. But for the most part, you should know that salaries account for well over 61% of the budget. We did have an increase in teacher salaries going into this new budget. An additional large section of our budget is benefits. 21, almost 22% of the budget accounts for benefits. We've been advised by our insurance broker to budget for 13% in this preliminary budget. That's 3% above last year's insurance budget, along with the increased salaries. Obviously, that's almost a 6% increase with our 2% increase in budget cap. So it's going to be a challenge. Those are the two biggest sections of our budget. We also come to all of the other portions of our budget, property and liability, insurance, professional development, library supplies, professional services and supplies. And those make up the remaining about 14% of the budget. All of those, that 14%, is really the only discretionary money that we have to look at and to make decisions about increasing or cutting as far as programs go, as far as operations go, and the other portions of the budget. If you look at your agenda, you can see under, I think it's under finance because I can't see it, unfortunately. Give me one second. I'm going to look for it. If you look on, if you go through the agenda, it is number 10. It is the approval of the 2020-21 tentative budget. It lets you know that the general fund amount is $69,433,840. The special revenue fund is $1,842,467. The debt service fund, $3,462,300, for a total preliminary budget of $74,738,607. Of that, the amount will be raised by local tax levy. The general fund tax levy is $58,806,826. The debt service tax levy is $2,654,459, for a total tax levy of $61,461,285. That is a balanced preliminary budget. It doesn't take into consideration any of the conversations that we'll be having in the upcoming eight weeks. Does anybody have any specific questions that I can answer at this time? Otherwise, like I said, we'll be having ongoing conversations over the next several board meetings and committee meetings.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Glazer. Any board members have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Glazer, we have presentations for the program review with Dr. Shojah, Dr. Riley, and Ms. Metchow. Are they on to do that presentation?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Vania and Mrs. Locan Solo, who I believe are both on the call. Mr. Vania? I don't hear anything.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
There, there, Locan Solo. Thank you.
No problem.
Go forward.
Um, I believe after the presentations to academic, we were either going to push them off to a meeting where it's a little bit more conducive to presenting, if that works.
How are you?
Oh, Ken, we're not hearing you.
We're, no, go ahead, Ken.
Oh.
We lost him. I was going to say, we also have the screencasts that we can certainly push out if we needed to.
We could. They're a little bit lengthy, but Ian, if-
For the meeting, we had the coordinator for screencasts for the board to review their board meeting. We did not know the capacity of the technology at the time. The screencasts they prepared were great. They were about 20 minutes each, and they went through their documents and their program review process. At the academic committee, we had them on to walk through the program review process, as well as shared their videos with them prior to that. And after realizing that it would probably take about an hour to watch all three of them, we were going to forward them to the board members, as well as maybe bring them on to the next board meeting to have them walk through their individual presentations.
All right.
That's fine. It doesn't need to be approved tonight to be able to go forward. So that's, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vania. So we'll table the program review until a future board meeting.
Unless you'd like us to play it now, which we're prepared to do as well. Lisa, it's up to you.
I think we should table it.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, it'll be an extra hour, so I think we can delay it until the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Vania. Okay, next up is superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. It has been a very interesting time in uncharted waters. I thank you all for your comments and for your recognition of honestly what's been going on in the district, in the township, in the state, in the country, in the world. My report for tonight is really just going to be two parts. I would love to remind the community that any of our children who currently receive breakfast or lunch in the schools are still eligible to receive that meal plan. We've communicated by email and robocall that those meals are available daily at the Nutley Family Service Bureau, 167 Chestnut Street, on the side of the building by the annex. They've set up tents and tables. Everybody did receive the schedule for receiving that food. I want to make sure that that's communicated broadly. Additionally, if there's any family that does not currently receive a meal service but is at this time of uncertainty or unfortunately with all the closings in a time of food instability, you are also welcome to contact the Nutley Family Service Bureau. They will make sure that you also receive food. There will be nobody that is turned away from a meal. We've had wonderful cooperation from our food service provider, Pomtonian, who provided fresh food for our students this week. And there was so much left that we were able to share it with our senior citizens. Now we have another company who is also stepping forward to be able to provide fresh produce. We are just so grateful to be able to partner with them and the Nutley Family Service Bureau to make sure everybody in town gets fed. The second part of my report tonight, I'm really just going to read a letter that we sent to the staff last evening. I think that it's important for everybody to hear since this wasn't communicated out to the public. "After our first day of virtual learning, I'm beyond impressed and thankful. I'm thankful for the staff for rising to the challenge and taking this initiative so seriously as we continue to keep our students engaged in learning. I loved hearing about the Facebook group teachers started to help each other learn and grow. I'm thankful for our principals and coordinators and that they're seeing authentic instruction and lessons and the posting of great resources, discussion questions, and prompt responses to student questions. And I'm grateful for the entire administrative team for their commitment to this process and belief in each of you and each child to be successful. I'm thankful that as an instructional team, you continue to go above and beyond. I'm thankful that as a district, we're able to provide devices for families that don't have and that every student and staff member was able to connect to the internet for programming. And I'm also grateful, it's not in the letter, but I'm grateful for this virtual meeting and that we were all able to connect. I'm thankful that we're able to feed our students in our community. We are organizing together to help feed everyone who may be in need. I'm thankful that we continue to reach out to those who are alone and may be struggling. I'm proud to be part of this district and this community and to have a Board of Education that is unwavering in their support of our students' education, our staff's needs, and the health and safety of the Nutley community. This is uncharted territory, not just for Nutley, but for the state and country as well. Nothing has prepared us for the leadership that's been required at every single level. Not only am I confident that we're off to a great start, poised to reach each of our students during this unique time, but I believe we're also prepared and ready for whatever challenge comes next. During every time that seems dark, there's always light. Each of you are a bright spot of light. What's being accomplished is nothing short of remarkable. You're helping to shape a new normal, and I couldn't be more excited. You're going to hear often from a number of members of the leadership team over the next few days and weeks on any number of topics. So please know as you take on these tasks, along with your own family's needs. I speak for all of us when I say we're thankful for you and your dedication. And I find it gratefully and sincerely. But also, I would tell you that it's heartfelt. Thank you."
Thank you, Dr. Glazer.
Lisa?
You're on mute, Lisa. Lisa, you're on mute.
Okay, we'll, let me text her.
Lisa? What would come next would be Mr. Appleton-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right, I was on mute. Sorry about that. Has Mr. Appleton joined?
I don't hear him. I'll try him again. Go on to the committees and I'll try him again.
Okay. Well, we have a director of building and grounds report. Mr. Pariji?
Perfect.
Thank you. Spring garden TCU trailers have been occupied as of 3/4/20. We are waiting for warmer weather to do the final grading and seeding. The fence will be replaced once the area is completed. The grounds crew has prepared all sports fields for spring sports. Hopefully, if we get back, we will be able to continue our sports. The maintenance crew is working on the Washington TCU trailer, whiteboards, chalkboards, and installing the locks. We need to regrade around the trailer, the Washington trailer, to get our final CO, and that will be done once we resume work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pariji. Any questions from board members? Okay, we'll go on to committee reports. Ms. Quirk, can you report on academic, please?
Yes. This was a virtual meeting held with the V- Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. This was a virtual meeting held with the, via Google Meet, a link provided to all participants. Committee members received screencasts of the program review presentations prior to the meeting via email. There were seven items in the discussion. Number one, Dr. Moscaro met with the committee to review services her practice could provide as the athletic covering physician. It was determined that we would resolve to accept a partnership with the practice to cover spring athletics if, when school resumes and to contract with them beginning July 1, 2020 for the 2020-2021 school year. Number two, Mrs. Julie Metchow summarized the ESL bilingual program review and resulting recommendations. This includes additional staffing to cover the changing demographics and expanding professional learning. Both of these are reflected in the budget requests. Number three, Dr. Jess Shojah summarized the library and media program review and resulting recommendations. This included reinstating the two library and media specialist positions cut from the 2019-2020 budget and changing some emphasis to STEAM. Number four, Dr. James Riley summarized the fine performing and practical arts program review and resulting recommendations. He also had recommendations for additional staff and facilities upgrade for the culinary program, as well as visioning for STEAM, including computer programming. Number five, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Vania, and Mrs. Locan Solo provided a review of the district's health-related closure plan, also posted on the district website under the COVID-19 tag, and a review of the test of virtual learning on March 16 and contracted personnel items. Number six, Dr. Glazer provided a review of personnel items. And number seven, there was no legal update. The next meeting of the academic committee is to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. Next up would be Mr. Carnesala? For a long-range facilities planning committee?
Thank you, Ms. Dancheck. The Long Range Facility Committee met on 3/3/2020. The committee discussed the secure entrance at Yanacaw School, included in the discussion were architects to develop conceptual designs, cost estimates, and timelines for construction and completion of the project. We will continue to update the public as additional information is available to share. This project is part of our capital projects for the 2021-2020-2021 budget year, which begins on July 1 of 2020. The committee also discussed state longer facility plan. A requirement of each school district is to provide a five-year facilities plan on buildings' needs and improvements. Our architects will be updating- Our architects will be updating our current long-range facility plan to reflect some of the new projects we've discussed and to remove any projects that may have been completed. The committee discussed arranging a meeting with the Spring Garden PTO. There's been interest in the Spring Garden PTO group to refurbish the seating in the auditorium. The committee agreed to set a time to discuss and share ideas with the Spring Garden PTO and facilitate a meeting hopefully when school is back in session. There will be further conversations about our space needs district-wide, which we discussed at our next meeting, which we will try to schedule when school is back in session. There were no business items, no new business items for that meeting. Meeting was adjourned at about 8:05, and the attendance to that meeting was myself, Ken Riley, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, Mr. Ferraro, our superintendent, Dr. Glazer, and DeCara Rubino, one of our architects and solution architects as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carnasella. Ms. Sarrow, can you report on policy, please?
Yes. So, Policy Committee met March 16th. In attendance was Dr. Glazer, Ms. Locan Sola, Mr. Dania, Ian Beanmeister as our guests, myself, Ms. Quirk, Ms. Dancheck-Martin. This was a virtual meeting held via Google Meet. The link is provided to all participants. In discussion, the committee discussed meeting virtually while school is closed to consider the policies that are in the Google Docs. Committee members will review the policies and be prepared for discussion at the next meeting. The following policies are on tonight's agenda for second reading. Eye protection, eye protection practice, bedbugs, management of life, local wellness policy, property inventory, and hazardous substance. As of right now, our next meeting will be Thursday, April 2nd, virtually unless anything changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarrow. Mr. Farrar, Finance, please.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on March 3rd and also on March 10th. The committee reviewed the finance resolutions that are on tonight's agenda. The committee reviewed the temporary budget that's also on tonight's agenda. We also continued our review of the Oval Turf Upgrade Project with our architects. Dr. Glazer updated the committee on legal and personnel matters. The committee reviewed the Board of Education goals for the 2019 and the 2020 calendar year, as well as the district goals for the 2019 and 2020 calendar year. The committee discussed district health insurance projections relative to the budget. We discussed facility upgrades with Mr. Pariji that he just mentioned previously, and our next meeting is yet to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Any other committee reports? Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allotted 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to include your name and address for each question you submit. Thank you. All right, I don't see any questions. Ian, do you have any questions that you've gathered?
There are currently no questions.
Okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll go on to the resolution items. Okay, Ms. Quirk, will you please take academic resolutions?
Yes, I move academic resolutions, one to three as written.
Second, Erica Zarrow.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Are we tabling number three?
Oh, yes, we should table number two.
No, number three, right?
Oh, number three, yeah. Number three, program review. Ms. Kakuza, can you please table approval of the program review, number three resolution item, under academic, please?
Okay. Do you want me to take a vote, or are we just going to say?
We're going to table it until we have the program review at a future date.
Okay. So you're going to approve academic one and two, table number three?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, you want me to vote for that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Carnasella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Damaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scalara?
Yes.
Ms. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kakuza. Mr. Carnasella, would you take administration resolutions?
Yes, Mrs. Dancheck-Martin. I'd like to move Resolution One as written.
Second, Charlie Kuzinski.
Any questions? No, Ms. Kakuza, will you take the roll?
Mr. Carnasella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Damaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalara?
Yes.
Ms. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Okay, as for finance resolutions, I think we have an additional finance resolution. Dr. Glazer, can you please read Finance Resolution, I think, number?
Twelve.
Number twelve?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Glazer?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So it is, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education..." Somebody else needs to mute. I'm not sure who that is, but somebody needs to mute. So, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the bylaw amendment changing the name of the fund from the Suburban Essex Joint Insurance Fund to the Suburban Metro Joint Insurance Fund, previously approved by the Board of Commissioners of the Suburban Essex Joint Insurance Fund and annexed hereto as amending the bylaws be approved."
Second.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Farrar, can you take finance resolutions, one through 12?
I'd like to move the finance resolution, one, two, twelve.
Second, Charlie Kuzinski.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Kakuza, please.
I have a question before we do the roll call. Sorry. Number five is for use of buildings and grounds. While the schools are closed, I don't think that these buildings are going to be used. Is that correct?
That is correct. The buildings are closed as of right now through March 27th. Since we've only closed through March 27th, and some people have asked for dates beyond that. So let's go. You look, there are dates that extend beyond the 27th. You have a March 30th, you have a May 30th. We also have some dates that happened already, March 10th.
Yeah, one was yesterday.
Not yesterday, well, so that can come off. But you have, you do have, you know, March 10th, you do have the 30th into April. So the only one that really is a moot point is the March 17th. That obviously didn't happen.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Good question.
This is South Ferraro. This is South Ferraro. I just want to add one thing, though. By us approving this, in the event that they're not available, that's not going to affect anything, is it?
No, if the buildings are closed, we are closed. There will be, we called and canceled the ones that are scheduled between, I guess we missed one, but between March 16th and March 27th. And if we have to extend our closure, we'll make sure that everybody knows that we're canceled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, Ms. Kakuza.
Mr. Carnasella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Damaio?
Yes, but I abstain on number five.
Abstain number five. Okay. Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
My only question is, shouldn't we revise that resolution to state in writing what we just discussed?
I think we should.
I think we need to, is my point.
Ms. Kakuza, can you please revise that for the minutes?
Okay, I will revise it to state that... What do you actually want me to say?
Number five is pending the school being opened.
Yeah, that's part of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Based on the revision, yes.
Okay. Mr. Riley, yes. Okay, Mr. Scalara?
Yes.
Ms. Sarrow? Yes, based on the revision. Right. Well, we'll put the revision in, right? So, yes. Okay, Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sarrow, can you take policy, please?
Yes, Ms. Martin, I move to policy Resolution One as stated.
Second.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay, we're doing policy?
Yep, we'll do personnel after. I skipped it, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnasella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Damaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk? Mrs. Quirk? We lose her?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalara?
Yes.
Ms. Sarrow?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. K... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Kuzinski, can you please take Personnel Resolutions?
Yes, Lisa Dancheck, I'm sorry. I move personal agenda report, number one.
Second.
Who was that? Frank?
Frank.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnasella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Damaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalara?
Yes.
Ms. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
All right, thank you. In this section, we allow questions or comments of all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask for you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to include your name and address for each question you submit. Thank you. Okay, Ian, are there any questions?
There are not yet any questions.
All right, seeing none. Any old business?
Yes, Ms. Dancheck-Martin.
There's a question. I just saw the little box pop up.
Okay.
Looks like someone's in the process of writing one, yeah.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin?
So the question...
I see one. The question is, "What happens with project graduation?"
Yes.
Dr. Glazer?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Rubin. At this time, I can't answer the question because we don't know where we're going to be on June 24th. Again, as a district, as a township, or other areas, that program is held off-site, not in district, and I don't have an answer for you.
Mr. Rubin would also like to know about graduation.
Again, I have no answer. At this time, graduation is scheduled for June 24th. We are only closed at this point through next week until we get additional guidance or learn of additional risks that would keep us closed longer. I have no comment at this time.
Right, thank you, Dr. Glazer. And Mr. Rubin, can you please type in your address so that we have that for the record? Any other questions?
Yes, Lisa, under Old Business. Dr. Glazer?
Yes.
I spoke to Ian today about some of the laptops, or, you know, from the grammar schools, that were malfunctioning, and he said we're in the process of trying to set something up to swap them off for better, or new computers. Have we set up any timelines yet?
So I also spoke to some families. We do have our virtual learning email where, when there's a problem, people call in. What happens is, after they email in, we determine if there's another device in the home, or if it's a necessary swap or breakage. We have set up, even though our buildings are closed, we've set up a remote site to be able to swap out those Chromebooks and to be able to do repairs. They determine through the virtual learning email when that needs to happen. Each family is contacted directly. And again, I've also spoken to probably the same families you have, and I believe that the immediate issue was resolved, and Ian and his team will schedule for those people that need a swap.
Thank you very much.
Any other old business?
I just have a question, which I'm assuming it's old business. If it's not, correct me. Dr. Glazer, I noticed we had made a decision as a district to close prior to the state recommending that all districts close. Has the state given a window as far as, is it a two-week period? Is it, you know, more than that? I know we, as a district, closed for a two-week period.
So we, the original guidance from the state is that they, with the Health Department, would determine the closing. There was updated guidance that allowed us to close in collaboration with the Health Department. That's what we did. I set the date for March 27th as a window of time to make sure that all the germs and viruses that might be in our buildings would die before then. We are not having our custodians come into those buildings. There's nobody coming into the building during this time, and if we're able to reopen, we'll spend the three or four days that's required to do a deep cleaning and sanitation. When the governor amended his guidance a third time and did close all the schools, he did that for an indeterminate amount of time. So we are closed without any answer of when that closure might be lifted. I think that things have also changed in the township, the county, and the state dramatically since that closure, and I think we're all awaiting an updated announcement from the governor probably this week.
Lisa, we have another question that just came up in the queue.
Okay. All right, usually this time is complete for the citizens when we go to Old Business, but since this is a new format and we are trying to figure this out, I'll read it out. Mr. Rubin's asked, "How does the existence of known infections affect the reopening schedule?" Okay. All right. Usually, this time is complete for the citizens when we go to old business, but since this is a new format and we are trying to figure this out, I'll read it out. Mr. Rubens asked, "How does the existence of known infections affect the reopening schedule?"
So, in the emergency management meeting today, we were briefed by the Department of Health and the Office of Emergency Management that, in fact, there are three confirmed cases of the coronavirus in the township of Nutley. The township has taken the responsibility for declaring that state of emergency as it relates to businesses, parks, those kinds of things. We have to await the information from the Department of Health. People have their confidentiality. It is my understanding that at this time, that there is not a concern for the school, but I am also going to say, from my understanding of the epidemiology, we had none this morning. We have three this evening. It's going to continue to escalate, and as I said, we're awaiting further information and guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Any additional old business?
I have a question. Ken Riley. And my question is, where do we stand with DeCaro with completing the long-range facilities program that we're waiting for?
Mr. Carnasella, Dr. Glazer?
I was going to say, Mr. Ferraro, that came up at our March 3rd committee meeting, and that question was asked directly. So, Mr. Ferraro, did you want to, or Mr. Carnasella, whoever?
I was going to say, I had the most recent conversation with Mr. DeCaro with regard to the long-range facility plan, and he had told me that there were some issues with the online system at the state, that there were issues with uploading long-range facility plans. At this time, the system is up and running correctly, and he did say that he would be reaching out to Mr. Perigi and coordinating with him, and I guess, Dr. Glazer as well, to start the conversations of what we're bringing online onto the new five-year plan, things that need to be removed so that it could be modified and uploaded to the state. As many of you know, it becomes difficult to do some of these programmed projects if they're not reflective in that five-year plan. So, it's imperative that we make sure that, along with everything else that's going on, that we put some attention to making sure that the complication continues between Mr. Perigi, the district, and the architect so that we can get that finalized.
Has he given us any type of guideline or timeline?
As I said, he said he was going to be reaching out to Mr. Perigi and that he was going to be reaching out to the superintendent to coordinate. So, I'm not sure if Mr. Perigi has heard back from Mr. DeCaro at this point, and if he hasn't, I would encourage the conversation to start from the outset. As you know, it's not in the scope of the board members to coordinate these meetings, so I would encourage that if we have not heard, as a district, from DeCaro yet, that we try to make an attempt to reach out to him.
I would agree. Thank you.
Any other old business? Any new business? Hearing none, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education recessed to close executive session at this time to discuss school security plans during the closing. Be it further resolved that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist.
Make the motion.
Second, Ken.
Thank you. All others?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
So, are we enclosed?
So.
Now, you'll have to create a new meeting for closed. This is still public.
Yeah, Ian will send out a new link for us.
Oh, okay.
Disconnect from this meeting. Julie, I'll give you a call in a second, and we'll come out.
Perfect. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll talk to you in a minute.
How do you disconnect? It's the X?
Hang up. Just take.
The hang-up button at the bottom.